21 at 6:33 PM with everybody stand or sit for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation after God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we'll call Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Freiberger, Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Fournette and Penno on attendance. Commissioner Huggins currently is absent. Everyone had an opportunity to take a look at the meeting minutes from January 19th, 2021. Any comments? Danielle, you're usually really good. We could get the grammar.
Yeah, no issues.
Okay. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I still move.
Okay, Commissioner Freiberger moves to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Penno has seconded. The minutes are are good to go and we're going to move on now to the general public comments. Section, the general public comments will open at 6:34 PM. So Catherine, is there any was there any commentary or anything that you received that you need to read into the record?
No.
Okay, we will now close the general public comments section at 6:35. So the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the shoreline master plan. Now, prior to opening that, John or Catherine, this is a pretty sizable document. Would you like to make any comments before I open up that section? And do we have anyone online either dial in or present that would like to comment when I open that section up in just a minute or so?
Catherine? I do you want me to give a little overview?
Yeah, I think that'd be that'd be great. Yeah, sure.
Sure. So yeah, last time we talked about the city of Sidioubouli is updating our shoreline master program under the growth management or sorry, the state shoreline management act requirements, the SMA for periodic review. So as we know, cities and counties with shorelines of the state have a shoreline master program. And they're required under the shoreline master or the SMA to conduct a periodic review on a statutory schedule. So cities in Skagit County are required to do that in 2020, but it's been pushed to 2021. So last meeting, we talked about how the planning commission will be established as the citizens advisory committee, the CAC. And the purpose of the CAC is to hear public comments and make recommendations on the proposed updates. So this time we have some proposed updates to review. Last time we looked over the public participation plan. And so we have the proposed amendments to the adopted SMP and exhibit A. And the amendments to appendix C shoreline critical areas regulations and exhibit B. And a comprehensive review checklist that sort of goes over, you know, every update by year that was provided by the Department of Ecology for cities to use as they review their their SMPs as part of the periodic review process. And that is exhibit C. So we have, we discussed last meeting that there are few anticipated changes. And so adopted changes to the adopted Sidioubouli shoreline master program includes some updates for cost thresholds and language consistent with the ecology example language. There's no substantial changes to this document as part of the 2021 periodic review process. We have shoreline critical areas regulations. So those have somewhat more substantial amendments with sort of expanded wetland buffer tables that sort of go into details and have different requirements for buffer widths based on the adjacent land use intensity. And then an associated table that describes the the land use intensity as low, medium or high intensity uses. And there was also a clarification for the requirement for a 25% reduction in wetland buffer widths. Previously did not say specified that a wetland professional or qualified professional would have to provide a report. Now we've kind of clarified that. And these changes can be seen on pages 29 through 31 of exhibit B to this memo, which is also with the planning memo. And that's also appendix C to the SMP. So the purpose of the meeting today is sort of to hear public comment and hear any recommendations that the planning commission might have as we review this our shoreline master program.
Okay, you know, thank you very much. Looking at that document, that's a that's a lot of work. It really is. And the detail that's contained in there for a lot of parties of interest, it's really an important document. So now at 6:39, I will open the general public comments section regarding the shoreline master program. So since this is a Zoom based platform, do we have anyone in the public right now that is online that would like to make any commentary regarding the documents that were enclosed in the packet?
Well, it's like it's all staff and planning commission members.
So what's a reasonable time to wait prior to closing it out? I would think that something as important as this, there would have been at least one individual that would have something to say.
Well, there's nobody in attendance and this is the first public hearing out of two. We're gonna we're also have a public hearing on the same issue at the next planning commission meeting.
Okay.
Because it is important, we're having two public hearings.
And there's no, there's no set rule about that. It's up to the discretion of the chair usually.
Did anybody write anything in Catherine? Did anyone send the emails or?
No, not yet. We do. We have done a newspaper posting of the hearing and we have an ongoing comment period starting from February 2nd to March 16th.
Okay, so we still have quite a bit of time actually, a full month.
Yes.
So at this point, I will close the public hearing section of the proposed master program since we do have another opportunity to revisit this in the following planning commission meeting. So people will have the opportunity to to comment if they would like. So at this point that we will close this section at 6:41. Now let me throw this out to the planet commission before we hit unfinished business. Does anybody have anything to add to the work Catherine and John have done? Now I'm gonna do something a little bit different because it's tough to see body language and when we look at each other when we're physically present. So I'm just gonna go down the from now on, I'll change it up. I'm just gonna go down the agenda list and I was gonna start with Pat. If he had anything to add. So Eric, you are next on deck. Do you have anything to add? And we will move on to Danielle after your opinions.
I have nothing to add at this time.
Okay, Danielle?
So that wetland table that was added per ecology, that wasn't optional is my understanding that that needed to be delineated out that in that way with the buffers and all of that. Is that correct?
Yes, so ecology recommended that we we expand on that. And they gave us a couple of options that would get us in compliance with the current standards. And the most straightforward for the city of Sidioubouli's SMP was to do the option two, they called it, with those buffer tables.
Because it looked much simpler before, but that it would not be in compliance anymore. It sounds like it had to be. Yeah. Okay. Thanks. That's that's all I had.
Commissioner Maddox, you're up next.
Um, no comment. I think it looks great.
Okay, Commissioner Fournette?
Ditto. Looks good. No comment.
And finally, Stacy, we're gonna change this up. So you won't be last at every meeting, but you're you're on deck.
No, I don't have any comment either though. Thanks, Joe.
Catherine, John, good job. Yeah, that's quite the document and you know, land use especially along shorelines. Yeah, it's a big deal and the impact that it has development wise, not just development wise, but just regarding the habitat that is pretty much cherished. I mean, it's a it's kind of a sacred thing in a lot of places in Washington state. So again, good job. So we'll move on to unfinished business. One of my favorites, we're going on to the electronic reader board. So John, why don't you take it away?
All right. Let's finish my notes here. So today, what I was hoping to accomplish is to discuss the the locations. I think the locations that we would that the planning commission wants to make a recommendation to allow or not allow. I think we had a good discussion about how the planning commission wants to see the electronic reader boards in the CBD look. So what I'm going to do is draft language that represents what the planning commission talked about at the last one for for changes to how reader boards can can look. We're going to add some description, probably a new section to our sign code that talks about that'll talk about you know, how bright they can be, how fast they can move. Those those sorts of details. And then separate from that, we can have regulations specific to the central business district in our design standards that will specify where we can have them. And if the planning commission wants to have different regulations for brightness and whatnot in the CBD versus the rest of town. So we're expanding the whole electronic reader board discussion to what should they look like? You know, while we're while we're opening up our plant or our sign code, we'll we'll address them throughout the city. And we'll talk the the brass tacks about that next time. I have some good starts. After reviewing other cities codes, you know, and hearing what the planning commission said, I'm looking at putting in rules to change how bright they can be between dusk and dawn. Hours of operation, we may there was some discussion about whether or not we should have them turned off at night. Maybe we do that in the CBD, but not the rest of town. That's for the planning commission discussion. We can discuss that at the next meeting. You know, the the specific language about pulsing or moving quickly, like how long it needs to be before it can scroll and how fast it can scroll. The specific, the brightness and nits N I T S. We, I can, I think I got a good idea what the planning commission wanted on that. I found some other interesting ones like, but I'd like to put in the codes. That's the one in particular, audio speakers are prohibited in association with sign. I think that's probably a good a good restriction. We don't want these signs also making noise. It's bad enough that the things at the gas station talk to you while you're pumping gas. You don't want to be walking down the street and be verbally hassled by a scrolling sign. You never know. I mean, the technology is getting to the point where they it's imaginable that a sign might recognize that somebody's walking by and be like, hey, you buddy. Come on in and get a, you know, it's cold out. Come get a hot drink. So try to nip that in the bud. So those sorts of details I'll put together in an actual sign ordinance with regulations. And then like I said, knowing that and where we're kind of going with those regulations, we can talk about today, the locations in the CBD that are that are reasonable. So I did receive three different colored maps from planning commission members. Thank you. They they look great. Like here, here, for example, is is one from Joe Fournette. And you can see it's mostly green and red, a little bit of red. And here's the most opposite one that I've received from Danielle Freiberger. And what I can tell you is I'm not seeing any any patterns like I thought we might. Here's, here's another one. That's pretty much exactly in between. The only pattern I'm seeing is no signs on Metcalf Street is the the one, the one pattern that these three all have in common. And possibly no signs on Northern Street either, but that's the similarities stop there. So it'll be interesting to see what the other planning commission members have. Did any of the other planning commissioners fill out a map like this?
Go ahead, Stacy.
I did. I just couldn't figure out how to send it because I'm dumb. But I have a picture I can email you. I can I can figure out how to send it by next time. Hopefully, if not, I'll just email you the picture.
And you know, we're in the office every day, so you can call and we can walk you through it.
Okay, sounds good.
Or we could get you a paper copy too.
That'd be good. I tried to print it and my printer would only print the legend and the map was huge. I couldn't shrink it.
It's kind of a strange file. You know, it was built on a GIS platform, emailed as a PDF. And then converted through our Apple email client server to some other sort of format that is a little different than what regular computers use. Though I tried to give detailed instructions. But I understand if if it was was hard to understand. Anybody else do a paper cup, paper map or anything like that?
I'm just going to, John, I'm just going down the list because because I want to add to it, but I'll go last. Commissioner Fournette, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, if I'm, yeah, I'm unmuted. John, were there any streets that were green on the three like ferry or something? Was there one street in common? Because I saw that they were all quite different.
West State Street, so State Street west of Pioneer Market. And Olive State Street on this one, Olive Puget on the on this one, all of Eastern parts of Wally and Third. I'm pretty sure when Eric sent him, Eric, when you say yours, did you send it to all?
Yeah, I got it.
And you got Danielle's too then?
Yeah.
So that's it. Those are the only three we got.
Silas, you have anything to add?
I just an apology because I've been like totally swamped with work and I haven't had a chance to deal with it. I've been trying to pay attention, but I've hardly even been out of my shop at all. So I, it's in my mind, but I haven't had a had a chance to give it my full attention. So.
That's fine. Danielle, you're next.
Well, I was surprised that there was that little overlap, I guess, between our various maps. And apparently I went for the conservative side of things. I was I was thinking we had talked about limiting the reader board signs within like a block of Metcalf. Maybe I misheard or misread that because when you're standing on Metcalf, you can see down the side streets. Like if you're at the post office or you know, on where you can see the old city hall. And so that's kind of what I was thinking is that, you know, you could see, of course, a lot of this depends on how bright the signs are. You could see them, you know, especially if they're near an intersection, which seems likely. You know, if they're independent signs. And so that's that was kind of the reasoning for limiting them that much. But obviously that is open to a lot of different viewpoints. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I'd agree with John on this. I was actually kind of surprised that how little overlap there was. I mean, the the two guiding principles kind of for me when I was, you know, doing my little walkabout and trying to decide what what would be what was kind of the historical integrity and then also the in the lighting invasiveness on residential. Like, for example, like a good example would be like Rita Street where, you know, both Commissioner Freiberger and myself on our maps had that as no, and Joe had that as kind of a maybe. I mean, that's at least 50% residential, if not more. So I just didn't feel right like that being potentially, you know, loaded with like even one sign might be a bit of a nuisance to neighborhoods. You know, now that I kind of think about it, I may even like update my maybe on Woodworth, the inside. So it's almost like a cross and just change that completely to to know just to maintain that integrity. Because I think Commissioner Freiberger has a really good point about you know, the visibility from from downtown. So you know, I think those were kind of my my main two. Ferry Street was a hard one because there's already signs on part of it. And but it's so close and it has a little bit of, you know, historical value to it a little bit. And you know, not knowing what's coming down the pike on the old dealership. I mean, that, you know, that could potentially have some residential on it. I don't know. So I was really torn on Ferry Street. And State just kind of has a little bit, it just seems to the character lend itself to a bit more of, you know, acceptability of signs. There's already a fairly big precedent of of signs on West State and and through. But yeah, those are kind of my my two, you know, real big guiding principles was just historical integrity of the CBD and then any sort of effect on on residences.
Okay, so I apologize for not sending my map in because I took a different look at it. What I did was I I overlaid, I have a platform provided through the Northwest MLS that I could actually pull the entire CBD. Look at the aerial, look at the parcels. And on top of walking it and being really familiar with the area, where my residential is, where certain things, even though they're in the CBD and the residential now, okay, they'll probably convert to commercial at some future point. Well, my bigger concern was if we look east of Metcalf using Ferry and State as our boundaries, there are, you know, I never noticed it, but we have a massive amount of pylon signs that are already there. And John, you brought up a really good point earlier on, and we're seeing that with other technologies as well, solar panels. Display technology, when these pylon signs can convert in a really affordable way into some type of active visual display. It's not just white, you know, mitts on a black background. You're going to have all kinds of options to replace the existing things that are there right now that can easily be illuminated. And you know, not using How's driving as an example, that that's an older technology. For five years and now, the things that are going to come along the way. Every there, everything from there's a repair shop to the American Legion. There's going to be all kinds of options as far as visual enhancement in the existing pylon signs outside of anything dealing with anything new. So this is a really good time to start talking about this stuff. And when we brought it up earlier on about being able to turn off a certain signage during active business hours, I think we should keep that on the table. Especially when we're adjacent to quite a few, what do you call residential areas that I don't see really gonna change anytime soon, specifically Borset on the on the western side. Then we start going down Puget, Reed, Pacific. You know, that that's where you're bordering the existing residential areas. So sign facage, but there's things that are already in place there. So this I think is just a good time to bring it up in general on anything, whether it's a reader board style, monument style, but there's already existing, you know, advertising components already in place. And I will get you that map, by the way. Go ahead, Silas.
Um, I just have a quick question. As I understand it, these signs are forbidden right now, but how does Howls have a I mean, I feel like there are some that are preexisting. Are they grandfathered in or how does that work?
There may have been mistakes in the past.
Right. Technically not a reader board because it's not white text, right? With a black background. It's something that's
No, that's an electronic reader board at Howls.
Yeah, yeah. We have it defined as like white with black or whatever. So yeah, I thought the same thing, by the way. I was looking at that. I was like, how did that get through?
So is is that current, is that like technically in violation of the city's sign ordinance then? And it's just not being enforced against or where does that stand?
It was accidentally permitted.
So they got a permit. Now it can't be taken away.
Yeah.
Because they got it in good faith or whatever, you know, they got it.
Right.
So would that be the same as Handymark too then?
Yes.
Handymark might be outside technically the CBD though.
Yeah, I think it is.
I don't know if that's true.
It's close. I haven't I haven't looked.
So they're on the corner of Haynes and State. So on one map, it actually shows that little corner. And on another one, it's in a block.
So you know, what's there now isn't, it's already there. So that's not really all that relevant to the conversation except for it does help us see what it looks like. And those are two very good examples. One's a big flashy, bright colored, can do all sorts of animation. And one's a fairly simple scrolling board, right? At Handymark. I don't think I don't think that one does a whole lot of fancy stuff. So that's one thing that I did want to get into. It's, you know, do we limit it to, you know, the planning commission had gone down that road a little bit about possibly limiting it to just, you know, the the standard red and black words only. No flashing. Or is the planning commission comfortable allowing something more like Howls with these tighter regulations that we're that we're putting together? For simplicity, you know, we're we're going to be regulating, we could be regulating these differently in the CBD than in the rest of the city. You know, if we regulate them all the same. You know, if we regulate them all the same, then, you know, we would want to leave them at, leave them as having the high capability because that's what we're going to have in most of the city. But it is possible to, you know, have them dumbed down for the CBD if we allow them in the CBD. That's entirely up to the planning commission. Maybe something you want to discuss at some point. Getting back to locations though. Stacy, would you mind putting yours up again? So, because we can see it pretty well. Cause yours looks like what I kind of expected a lot of them to look like.
The one on my phone?
Yeah.
Let me try. So like there's, there's Rita and stuff that everybody was talking about and I did read that out.
So more or less what you're, what you're showing is green up and down Ferry, green up and down.
I did Ferry and, and most of State to the library.
Yeah.
And then past that, I was kind of blue on the rest of that because there's some homes down that way. Past the James Market. Is it James here?
Yeah, it's on the opposite side of the street and then I call it the ghost house. I mentioned that Eric earlier, it's in between E and E, Lumber and James Market, but that property is actually owned by the owners of E and E.
Yeah.
Lot too. So I don't think that's going to stay the ghost house forever. Cause if there's ghosts in Sejra, well, it's in that house.
I was, I was looking, I walked by there today and happened to notice that I think it's got a big lot and it's got one, probably a duplex. There might be three units in that house. I, I could, I could see somebody like BYK buying that property, knocking that house down and
Yeah, absolutely.
Doing, you know, a little bit, a little bit of commercial on the front and getting a whole bunch of units on it to actually be a pretty a doable project. I think that, you know, somebody might be able to pencil that out depending on what price that building is sold for.
It's a huge lot. It's 123 by almost 300 in length.
Yeah. So that's close to an acre.
Yeah.
If it's 300 deep.
300, $299 on the east, 302 on the west, 123 on both front and back.
I think if, I think 160 by 300 is about an acre. Yeah. So that's just under an acre. Not really relevant to this conversation, but you know, it could, it could be something commercial wise in the not too distant future. So what I'm kind of, I think the one thing that I'm seeing is, and what I'm also kind of trying to process in my head as I see these complicated maps of, of a way of writing a code to allow on certain streets. What I, what I think I'm leaning towards, well, you know, standing here thinking on my feet, I'm thinking maybe allow, just writing it. So, you know, still not allowed in the central business district, except for on West State Street or on State Street and on Ferry Street and on Eastern Street. And if anybody wants to throw any of the, throw any others in there. Obviously Ferry, we'd have to say like Ferry, west of Murdoch or Murdoch or Puget, whatever planning commission feels is appropriate. But Eastern was looking like a possibility. State Street, west of Fourth, what, maybe west of Puget also. Anyway, that's kind of what I'm thinking. Yeah. And I saw that's, that's what yours looked like Stacy. That's why yours was kind of the tiebreaker between all of these starts to put a, a little bit of a a pattern together. So I'd be interested to see the rest of the planning commissions and, and I know that I'm not going to be able to make everybody happy because they all look very different. So we'll have to get to a point where we can actually write something that makes sense and is understandable to the public. So I'd love to see your maps and see if I can take a shot at it and, you know, you can look at it next month and tell me if we're way off base.
You know what the challenge is? Technology is so rapidly evolving that, I mean, we're doing something right now in 2021 by the known display technologies and, you know, we've seen things change over probably the past 10 years, but 10 years from now, you're going to have the ability to put holograms out there. When you're talking about it, we were talking about a sign earlier like, come on in. Well, how about all of a sudden a little laser flash? You can't even see it. And there's a little person there saying, come on in, right? These are things that may be happening in the future that aren't that far off. So it's kind of like right in the constitution. It's like, what's going to hold up now in 10, 15 years? That still, you know, hits what we want without actually somebody saying, oh, there is a little bit of a fine line there because it doesn't say, I can't project off of it. All of a sudden a little whatever appears on out and says, come on in. So, you know, are we trying to front run things to keep it limited within where that display area is? Nothing can come off of it. You know, there's a whole bunch of things to think about here and I'm just throwing that out there. But this is a good time to take it up. I would, I would definitely imagine because you do have existing signage there that can easily be adapted to an interactive display technology going forward. So. Go ahead, Silas.
Um, I, I guess I'd just like to throw my two cents in for coming off of what Joe said to really limit, you know, I think that the language that was sort of proposed by the council member, I can't remember her name at the moment, but um, it was like signs that are like one, a background color and one text color and with sort of strict limits on animation and things like that. I think especially in the central business district, I would be strongly in favor of those types of limits. Um, I really don't want to have a city or at least the central business district where people basically have just televisions as their signs blasting at us, you know? And I, so for me, that's, you know, if we're going to allow these things, that, that's an important part of it. I mean, you know, Howells does have some kind of flashy animation, but it's still, as far as I can tell, is just mostly just a one color font. And those aren't my favorite, but I don't, I don't really mind them. But like the one that the city has there right off of 20, you know, I guess I understand the utility of it, but I would hate to be in a walking around downtown in every business having one of those. That's just basically a more or less a television or, or, you know, hologram shooting out of it or whatever the case may be. And so I, I think it's really easy to limit that by just kind of sticking with this language that we, that's been proposed. That's like, you know, one color text and a background color and, you know, sort of, you know, strict limits on the animation. Anyway, that, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Do you feel that way about just in the CBD or in the city in general?
That's interesting. Um, I feel that way in the city in general, but I feel like the cat's kind of out of the bag already, you know, and I don't know. I don't know if we can stuff it back in or not. I mean, the city itself owns one of the most advanced reader board signs in the, in town. And so but yeah, I don't know. I mean, like up highway 20 or whatever, it could get real distracting if there's a whole bunch of those things. So I, I don't know, you know, I don't know enough about signs, laws to know if, if any business can put, if there's any like restrictions on those things next to like heavy driving corridors or, you know, it seems complicated, but.
Danielle, after Silas?
So I generally agree with Silas and honestly, if we limit the, the animation and the color schemes on it, State seemed like a logical place, both State and Ferry to have that. It's just that there are a lot of homes on East State there that I think would have an issue with bright signs across the way on the businesses. Even though I understand why the businesses would want it, but if we limit how bright the signs are, I read that article that Joe Fournette linked on the brightness and I was surprised at how dim actually they were recommending the signs be to not interfere with. And, and of course the coloring would, would play into that as well. So, so I think there's a number of, of ways to do that, but definitely limiting it so that it's, it's not you know, walking around like, like Silas said with TV screens.
Anyone else?
You know, I'm, I'm a little bit torn. I, I guess, you know, I would err on the side of, I'm not a big sign guy. Something that I know specifically with downtown, one, because I drive through it every day, four times a day, but also with driving by Howells quite a bit. I find them very distracting. Even though they do help kind of promote information. You know, they, they, they don't, I don't think that they really do it in a very effective manner. I think it's not a very safe manner, especially within the downtown corridor. The decor of the CBD, it's such a tight area between, you know, the, the two lanes plus a lot of on-street parking. There's, there's pedestrians and, you know, it's easy to, to get distracted by some of these signs. You know, I probably would beat up most on Howells. Love Howells. Don't want to come across like I don't like Howells, but you know, one, their sign, I mean, from a aesthetic standpoint, makes zero sense. It's like a 1950s burger joint with like a, you know, a 21st century sign. It just, one, doesn't work and two, it's extremely bright. And also very distracting, particularly in that area. Cause that's, that's a very, during COVID especially, it's a very busy, busy area. You know, I, I think there definitely needs to be heavier, just heavier restrictions in downtown versus the rest of town. You know, I think that signs can be used effectively more in higher traffic and open, more open areas. But yeah, like for me, I, I think the simplicity, simpler signs are better for any sort of downtown allowance, whatever that may be. And again, a lot of what I'm going to be judging this on for myself is those two principles. How, how much is it going to pollute the area for residences? And, and how, how much is it going to affect the aesthetic, the character of the downtown area? You know, I'll even throw kind of myself under the bus with Central, Central Elementary, you know, I, I think that's a, a good tool for the school, but at the same time, it's a heavy solid residential area and that thing runs 24/7 and, you know, it's pretty bright. And I'm sure that the houses right next to it really don't like the school district because of that. So I would, you know, really err on the side of any sort of residential intrusion, light pollution. When we, we get close to, to those residential areas. And, you know, you made a comment earlier, Commissioner Fatisey about, you know, some of the CBD going from residential to to more commercial. Again, going back to like maybe Rita Street, I could see Rita Street developing more into commercial than residential. But I mean, how long is that going to take? I mean, that could take, you know, 50 years in order to do. So, you know, I, I don't know. I, I definitely think that now that I've thought about it more and seen kind of the maps, I definitely think that Woodworth between Eastern and Murdoch should definitely be a no, no sign zone. So having that, that main drag through Metcalf and then that section, those two blocks of Woodworth should definitely be a, a no, no sign zone.
What I was saying earlier, my bigger concern is the existing pylons that are already in place because at the end of the day, Howells actually sets a baseline for the other business owners to say, hey, if they can do it, I can do it because I already have an existing pylon sign in place. And as the cost of that technology goes down, which we know it will, that, that, that's a given. I mean, technology, I mean, if anybody bought a personal computer in 1984 like I did, it was like $3,000 for a 10 megabyte drive and 512 K of memory. So five years from now, different display technology is going to be not only highly affordable, but have quite a bit of capability. That if you're a business owner and you're listening to a sales pitch, hey, guess what? This sign can do this. Now's the time to get the genie back in the bottle, so to speak, because we already have precedence with the burger place. And if you just walk right in that area, I want to say there's at least five more pylon signs. American Legion, there's, there's a bunch of them. So, and they're the old style, kind of like, you know, more old school that, that you're used to, but five years from now, that might not be the case at all.
So are you saying no pylon signs?
But you can't take that away. If I'm a business owner, I'm going to fight tooth and nail to keep it. Right? I'm going to tell the American Legion, take down your pylon sign. Yeah. I don't know. You know, I'm not making the decision here. This is a group effort. My, my comment is on the existing stuff to be able to retrofit that and that I believe is probably in the future as technology costs come down and capabilities expand. It's something that we should have a conversation about as to how that transition is going to happen. Right? Right now it's not innocuous because nobody's doing anything. Five years from now, there's change. I mean, there's a lot of older businesses there that I'm assuming a new operator might come in, have a different ideas to the type of business they want to want to work with. And now would be the time to take a look at it, fully anticipating we're going to have that change coming at us. If not now, probably within the next five years. And I think industry stats will show that the more you can attract people, right? Whatever it is to get you to turn your eyes on that facility, you have a better chance of them walking in the door. And that's proven day and day again of the people that just stare at their cell phones pretty much 24 hours a day. Something is always trying to engage you in this world. Okay. Everybody's always staring at that thing. Okay. That's no different than what signage is. Something's always begging for your attention and that's what signs do. So if we want to keep this particular segment of the city somewhat manageable, now's the time to start having those discussions. Danielle?
Yeah. Commissioner Fatisey, I see what you're saying with, you know, you can't really put the cat back in the bag with, and people are going to look at what's already out there. So I think the, the biggest thing that would make the most people happy would probably be, again, just trying to limit the light shining in people's windows and the kind of how disruptive it is. I mean, looking at that, I pulled it up on Google Street View. Again, there, it still is a black background. So even though the, the letters are lit up there at the burger place, it's not nearly as intrusive as say a white background. So, so there's definitely things we can do so that, you know, residences are as minimally impacted as possible. And still, people can have their, their signs.
Yeah, I'm not picking on the burger place, by the way, it's just as an example of what that's going to look like on the other pylon signs. If other people start deciding to upgrade their technology, that's what I'm, that's what I'm pretty much making my comment on, not necessarily the burger place. It's the fact that the technology is coming, that the existing pylons that are already there will be easily adaptable for an enhanced display technology. That's it, and what, what it's gonna be, like, like I said, it could be a hologram screaming out of it, who knows? So that would be the time to say, okay, what's already in place, these are the limitations on it, so. Anyone else? John, have you gotten any direction here?
Oh, I got good direction, I'm looking at Joe, at Joe Fournette, I know that he has a lot of good input, and I want to make sure that he's got his word.
Well, I was just reading back on the memo from last month, and it talks about the city council planning committee. You know, asking us to discuss this, and that's exactly what we're doing, so we're doing our job here. But one thing, I think they really wanted to limit, you know, everyone's talking about animated, high-tech signs, and what they're saying is they, they want to eliminate that and not allow that, they want it to be very low-key.
And put some teeth in. I'm not sure that that, I'm not sure that that was actually what they were saying. This all started, this all started because what, one of the commissioners had talked to local business owners that wanted to have signs. And then, so she put together, as Councilman Cussey, put together that draft proposal that's attached to either, that's one of the previous memo. So it wasn't, there wasn't necessarily any discussion that they wanted to make sure that they're all toned down, they didn't get to that level, they really just got, they really just talked about, hey, do you want the planning commission to look into this issue? Because some business owners want to use them, and we can regulate them better, and they said, sure. Send it to the planning commission, they do a good job at hammering out the details, so let's just throw it to the planning commission for them to review, they don't have any specific agenda that they're trying to do to get done besides give some opportunities for these signs.
Well, yeah, she, she gave some good examples of how it could be written. But one thing that sticks out, it says currently there is only loose controls on those aspects of electronic reader boards. And so I think what they're asking for here is for us to come up with some kind of definition of what's allowed and what's not, so there is something on the code book that says Howells, Howells type is acceptable, but the other types aren't.
And when they, when they brought up the electronic reader board issue, I pointed out, like, our code is very very weak on regulating them. So it's actually difficult for staff to, to, to regulate them and permit them, because our guidance is, is minimal. And so if you've looked at other jurisdictions, they, they have a lot more purpose behind them and, and, and regulation, so that's what we're doing today is this, this process at least, is to make something that regulates them to a certain extent.
Well, I, I like having good information on reader boards, like when I'm in any town USA, I'm looking for the time, the temperature. And it irritates me when they don't flash quick enough, because I don't want centigrade, I want Fahrenheit, you know, switch quick. And, you know, I like good information, I don't like all the dancing baloney and the craziness, of course, but. And you know, it says in here that we should say it can't be a distraction, it can't block good views, it can't be, you know, illuminating in people's eyes, it can't be lit after dark. I think we can put some verbiage in this that gives it some teeth, that does what we want, but gives it the ability to give information that you want out in front of your store without offending anyone.
That's definitely what we're trying to do.
Okay, can I throw a term out there that, you know how we, we prefer shells instead of maybes? In order to address anything that happens in the future as well, it's easier to draft language that says limited to. Right, so we know what we want limited to now in two thousand and twenty-one, regardless of what happens in the future, and if something happens in the future where there's a a change that needs to be made, well, it'd probably be up to someone else. But at this particular point in time, since we know the different attributes that we're looking for in order to control what the, that format is going to be, I think it's easy to use language like limited to. No flashing or animated or, or whatever, but I think limited to gives us a good baseline to start from there. Because we don't have to worry about anything that we're saying could come up or whatever, it's just limited to this. So that's one of my, that's my two cents as far as potentially looking at that as a format. You know, moving forward to say, okay, we're gonna let you do it, but this is what the limit is. We already have some good policy right now, even in the existing sign code, so it's not like we're starting from scratch either, so.
Stacy, did you have any further input before I go into? So I Joe asked me if, if I've got good feedback to go by, I've taken good notes, and I think I've got a good feel for what the planning commission is interested in doing. I'm just gonna ask a couple follow-up questions, because I got I got information, like a couple of people had talked about whether or not they're interested in, in regulating signs differently in the CBDs than the rest of the city, is that? Is that something that interests the planning commission, should I have different levels of, of, you know, sign brightness and scrolling features and animation allowances in the rest of the city from the CBD, or do we just all, or do we kind of go in the same direction? I've heard from Silas and Eric on this, and a little bit to a certain extent Danielle. Anybody else have any strong opinions?
I think the original objective was to make it different than what the remainder of the city is for specific reasons, dealing with the CBD by itself. Especially the interaction where you have residential and the commercial literally right across the street. I got Highway twenty, you kind of have some of it, but that's Highway twenty, I mean, that's a state highway, and you're gonna have all types of signage on that. So I thought the original intent was to allow something that currently is not permissible, but to have it deployed in a manner where it's not offensive, whoever determines what offensive is. Moving forward, so I would, I would think that it would be a different subset of regulations that will have similar aspects of the existing sign code, but have other scaled-down versions when it comes to luminosity or animation or whatever. I think that was the original intent of this, because we were talking reader boards, right?
Right, well, you know, this did just start as a CBD thing, but what's grown out of this is a clear need for us to regulate electronic reader boards everywhere in the city, so as long as we're already opening up the sign code and may, in, you know, to address them in the CBD. It's the right time for us to also put some controls on reader boards throughout the rest of the city, so.
Great.
That's why I'm asking you, the direct question is, do, do we want to regulate them a little with more regulation, more control in the CBD? Or just, or are we leaning towards having tighter controls throughout the rest of the city?
I see a bunch of yeses here.
Okay, so we'll go with two-tiered. That, that's, that, does that seem okay?
Yep.
All right. And, and then what I'm also leaning towards is I want to see everybody's maps, but like I said, I'm leaning towards most of State Street, most of Ferry Street and Eastern Street being okay, maybe on Murdoch, I'd like to hear from the planning commission on that. And then those would just, those would be just the city, those would just be the areas that we would allow it.
No, it was probably with Woodworth, Woodworth there, it's all, it's all, it's all businesses, pretty much.
No, I've heard pretty distinctly that Woodworth would be a no-go because of its historic feel in that area.
You have the, well, I could see the brewery potentially wanting something a little bit more informative on, on their property.
There are no breweries that have, I don't know any breweries that have electronic reader boards.
I don't know, I'd want to shift it up a little bit.
Anything else that the planning commission wants to, to put into this before I close this section of the meeting?
Well, since you mentioned Murdoch, that was an interesting one, because going north from State Street, you do have some, you know, auto stores and various, you know, commercial things that you think potentially might want a, a reader board, but then you have the old City Hall, I don't know, and you have the museum, and then you go into that, those offices and kind of a little bit more old-town feel, a little bit north, and then it goes residential, so that one was kind of I don't know, I guess if we limit the how they look again, it's not gonna be as intrusive and probably not as problematic. No one would worth.
All right, well, I guess unless there's anything else, we can end this discussion for tonight, now, I have one other thing that I think got mentioned to you when we're done with this.
Does anybody have any more comments before we move on to new business? Okay, John, it's all yours.
So are we technically on planning commission information?
I, I wasn't sure if you had, that this was new business you wanted to talk about, or?
No, not new business.
Okay, so planning commission discussion information items, you're up.
Yeah, so the, some of the council members are very displeased with the, the new garage doors at one of the local businesses on Metcalf Street. So the city council will be entertaining a moratorium on changes to buildings in the central business district at their next city council meeting. And we'll find out more about what, where we're gonna go from there, whatever they do, it's gonna come to the planning commission. And it might be more design standards updates, it might be historic district stuff, we don't, we don't really know yet. But the, the garage doors were not a big hit with some people in the community, and so the planning commission may be taking up some design standards in the very near future.
Was that the Abbott's Alley garage doors?
No, there's no garage doors on Abbott's Alley. It's on, at the bullpen.
Bullpen, how are they allowed to do it in the first place, isn't there already standards for something to that effect?
Well, we'll get in, we'll, we'll talk all about that at the next, when we get it to you.
So it's coming our way, basically, so you'll have that as a duplicate, when you get a little bit more info, okay? Does anybody have anything else for the good of the order right now? Okay, motion to adjourn. Do we have, we have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Fournette? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Maddox, the meeting is now adjourned at seven thirty-eight PM, thank you, everyone.